Without going to court?
It was a nutcase.
For the first time, I feel good in here.
We're ready. We're on.
He was making me sleepy.
All right. If you will, please bow your heads for a moment of prayer. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to meet in a free land and a free country. We thank you for those who have sacrificed for us and those who fight overseas and on the seas for our freedoms. We thank you for this wonderful place that you have brought us to tonight. We thank you for all the many blessings that we have. Please bless our families and bless our communities in this Christmas season. And we thank you for all your love in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, December 18, 2008. There may be those of you who are wondering why we're a little late getting started, but we had a review of an alternative pension plan for our City of Murfreesboro future employees this evening. And that began at 5:30, and it went a little longer than we would have expected, but we did have a very nice special meeting there upstairs, and that's why we're a little bit late. I do want to call to the public's attention the fact that the interchange at State Route 840 and Veterans Parkway, formerly known as Beasley Road, was opened for public use today by the Tennessee Department of Transportation. And this opening includes the interchange as well as the connecting five-lane roadway between State Route 96 and Burton Ob Road. So this joint TDOT-Rutherford County and City of Murfreesboro project is now open and available. And all of those who used to have to go into town to get out of town now have a new route to use. If you will, share that with your friends and neighbors and those you work with if it makes sense for you to use that new interchange. State Route 840 and Veterans Parkway, which is, most of us remember it as Beasley Road. All right, council members, before you, you have your consent agenda. And Item 1A, the second bullet, annual pavement marking contract, was left off the first publication of our agenda, I guess in the local paper, is that correct? Just in the agenda. Okay, so that's in your agenda packet today. If you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, are there any questions or is it time for a motion?
No questions, mayor. Move for adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have the minutes of the meeting held on December 4. Before you, are there any additions or deletions? Or are you ready for a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Fire Prevention, Sections 12-26, 12-27, 12-29, and 12-30 dealing with fireworks.
Move for approval on third and final reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
No.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance to zone an area along East Main Street to a multi-family residential 16, RM 16 District simultaneous with annexation. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, if you would, I'd like to ask Mr. Adelot to come up. I think we've had, as you recall, I had requested at first reading that we would have a neighborhood meeting sometime prior to third and final reading. I think, Mr. Adelot, I see some residents that may be here. Mr. Adelot, is that?
Yes, sir. We had the neighborhood meeting on Tuesday evening. We had it at the Hobgood Elementary School. We had approximately, on the signing list, about 22 people. Several of those were planning staff. We did have a very diverse discussion. I think there was a lot of discussion about the traffic study that had been performed by SEC. You received it in your agenda package for the, I guess that was the December 4 meeting. You saw a package that was put together by the applicant. We discussed that. I think the neighborhood, and they did ask me to report to you that they felt that the study was flawed. They felt that the times of day and that the days of the study were when the school was out. I have since confirmed that the MTSU and the Rutherford County Schools was in session at the time that the traffic counts were done. I think that the analysis of the information may have been done at a different date, but the actual traffic counts, both the MTSU and Rutherford County was in session. The city's traffic director has confirmed that the timeframes were, in fact, coinciding with the peak hour on the roadway. So he has confidence that the study was done properly. He concurs with the results. And the results indicate that a turn lane is not warranted by what the state would use. Now, what I want to report to the council is, regardless of the traffic study, that's something that the planning commission would discuss at a future date when we review a site plan. Most of the other items were things that would be very routine during a planning commission discussion of a site plan. Nothing that can't be resolved then. The validity of the traffic study, however, our traffic director seems confident that it was done, or, excuse me, our traffic engineer seems confident it was done with proper methodology to be able to answer the kind of questions he would have as to the types of movements, the type of traffic, and the impact on the roadway. I would anticipate having a report for you in your agenda for third and final reading. I was unable to get it done because the agenda went out Tuesday morning. Our meeting wasn't until Tuesday evening. I'd be glad to answer questions if you'd like to. We also have Mr. Adam Ledzinger. He was the engineer with SEC who worked on that study.
Mr. Adelot, on the traffic study was, from the resident's point of view, was that the primary concern that they had, that it was not valid because of the school?
That was something that they discussed quite a bit and was discussed, their fear and concern that when the traffic counts were done, that Rutherford County Schools and/or MTSU were not in session, which would have skewed the results of the traffic. And that was something that they felt would have been a fatal flaw. And I think in my gut feeling would be that that would have a big impact on it, from my view of it. But in looking at the days of the actual counts, and actually, there were three days. It would have been September 11th, they did an AM and a PM peak count. On November the 11th, they did an AM count. And on November the 12th, they did a PM count. The reason they did a second count in November was because after the counts from September, they didn't account for some turning movements at Juliet, so the Juliet Drive. So our traffic engineer said, "You guys need to go back out there and count some more because I need some additional information to be able to see what kind of turning movements and how many cars are going where." So they went back out for the second time. I did check the counters for MTSU and the counters for Rutherford County Schools, and both of them indicated that they were in session at that time on all those dates.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Okay, we talked about traffic. Were there, I don't have that report, mayor, and I don't really know exactly what was going on in the public here or the neighborhood meeting. Was traffic in the, what was the main concerns? Were there other concerns voiced by the residents?
Oh, there are a lot of other concerns expressed. Of course, the neighborhood's concerned about the impact on the neighborhood, the possibility of crime. There was concern about the orientation of the access drive. We discussed that quite a bit. There was concern about the quality and how that quality may change over time as the
Quality of?
The apartments.
The development, okay.
Like, for instance, how Holly Park has changed from a complex that over time it became something a little bit different, and there are fears that that might be the case here. They expressed concerns about drainage and how the drainage system in their subdivision had been impacted, in their view, years ago when Holly Park had been constructed. We discussed the connection to John Bragg Highway and how that would require access over environmentally sensitive land. I don't think that that was discussed at great length. It's something that was still a nagging concern. But it was something that was discussed, the environmental concerns. We discussed a lot of other roadways and traffic in general. We were there for about two hours.
But, you know, I know this was, you know, anytime you're doing a neighborhood meeting, they're difficult. And I appreciate the applicant and also staff doing that. I appreciate the neighborhood turning it out. And it's, you know, kind of hard to make a decision without that. We talked about traffic. The traffic concerns, were they turning lanes into the site and also maybe stacking onto Rutherford Boulevard?
It was a little bit of all of the above and that. I think traffic, as a whole, there's concerns about traffic being put onto Juliet, okay? And Juliet's a substandard county road. When I say substandard, it doesn't mean it's a bad road. It just doesn't meet the type of streets that would be expected to carry heavy traffic or it doesn't meet our current standards that the city has for streets. There was concerns about that. There was concerns about traffic coming out in the morning and making a left turn and being in conflict with traffic that's outbound, traffic turning into the site, traffic adding to the traffic volumes on East Main Street and impacting the intersection at Rutherford Boulevard. There was concerns about the impact of traffic a little bit further, closer into town. That is very frequently a major concern, and the concern's not always pinpointed at one exact spot. Traffic is something that's felt often remote from a particular area or is concerned to be felt further from the site. But yes, we talked about traffic up and down, backwards and forwards, and went back over the second time. But I want to, again, assure you and them that these are the type of issues that, regardless of the traffic study indicating that there's not a warrant for a turn lane, that's still something that's within the discretion of the planning commission when they review it. They're going to return to that issue and may even have, maybe a greater amount of scrutiny than may have been done on that traffic study. The traffic studies seem to be more oriented as to the need for turn lanes into the site off of the East Main Street. And the answer was, it's not warranted. But that doesn't mean we have abandoned that subject. Also, something that wasn't discussed at great length, but I do want to remind the council and the people who may be listening, that it is our standard that along streets that are substandard, a developer is obligated to upgrade that street to a standard condition. And he may do it in a couple of ways. The frontage along his front, he may have to rebuild with the curbs and gutters and sidewalks. That's standard operating procedure. He may have to add a turn lane. We may, at our discretion, allow him to pay in lieu of construction if we expect that the city can do that better later. We're not going to let him off the hook. He has an obligation to improve in that roadway.
That was, I think you just kind of answered my second question to me. Since East Main is a substandard road, the future of why, if this is going to cater to individuals who are maybe attending MTSU for bicycle lanes and/or sidewalks or curbs and gutters or different things along those lines?
Right. I'm very confident that at the very minimum, it will require sidewalks and curbs and gutters, possibly some additional asphalt. But that's something that will be, as we get the survey data in and our city engineer can help to coordinate with the design engineer of the site, we will know. One thing's important, we don't want to have them construct something that's going to cause a gap that's going to become a safety hazard. So that's when we'll make a judgment call as to whether a payment in lieu would be a more appropriate solution.
It would be feasible to fix this one small portion of the road and leave the rest of it unattended, I understand that.
Mr. McFarland.
Mr. Allen, I think we talked about this at the public hearing, but can you refresh my memory, why that we, this is coming in as RM 16 instead of a planned commercial development? And do we have, do we have the information that you normally would see as under a planned development?
Mr. McFarland, the reason was it was really the applicant's request to proceed as RM 16. He made his own application, and it was processed as he has a right to do, as RM 16. A portion of his property is already in the city. About half the property is already in the city, and it is already zoned RM 16. And it was before this request was made. So he was looking at the second half of how it should be zoned. The question became, does he come in and ask for the remainder, as it's annexed, to come in and be zoned the same as his existing property to RM 16, which would serve his objectives? Or should he make a request for that portion to be zoned as a planned development or for the entire parcel? In light of his situation, he felt that he wanted to have the flexibility of coming in as RM 16. We did discuss the planned development approach. He had a very clear idea of what he wanted to do, but he didn't have the plans developed to the point at that time of being able to make a RM 16 or, excuse me, a planned residential development application. As it turns out, probably he would have saved himself quite a bit of time had he made it because he's gone into more study that's delayed him about five, six months than he would have experienced had he just made the planned development application then.
I think that's the one thing.
One more thing about that application was that the property to the south, the property to the east, the property to the west, all of that is also zoned RM 16. So he felt that that lended a little bit of credence to his request for RM 16 as well for these additional two acres or so.
Other questions?
Mayor, I guess we're at a point where we can either approve this on second reading and wait for the traffic study and the report from the neighborhood meeting before we make a third, approval on third and final reading. And at that time, we can make motions or defer or whatever we wanted to do. Is that what you're looking like, Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. The reports actually that I have prepared is not a whole lot more than what I outlined in my conversation.
I believe that what he has said is, we have professional staff. We can either agree with them or disagree with them. We have standards. We can either agree with them or disagree with them. And C-Commissioner P. is here, some of the residents there, and I'm certain they have concern about any change in any of the property out there. But I think on the best advice of the engineering firm, what we demand from our city staff, and they do not let us down often. And I think we're here on second reading on the same thing that they gave to us the first night, unless you have a change.
Well, only point is, is I haven't seen the numbers of the traffic study. I know this is, how many unit complex?
Sixty-four units is what's proposed. Mr. Bratcher, in the materials that were sent to you last week, the study, the materials in the back part of it had the, basically, the guts of the traffic study included with it. And you may not have recognized what it was. It had several graphs and charts. Those graphs and charts don't mean a whole lot to me, but they mean a whole lot more to Mr. Ballen-Chandler, our traffic engineer. You may want to have an opportunity before third and final reading or before second and final, even tonight, to review that and maybe have some questions. And that's one reason why I asked Mr. Ledzinger to be present, just in case you folks want to bring it up tonight.
But one of the reasons we have staff is so we don't have to look at traffic studies. I mean, you understand.
Well, I do, and I did go back and.
And you worked 20 years to make sure you didn't have to look at traffic studies by hiring professionals to work for the city to try to make those determinations.
And they do a great job, but I don't always agree with every study I see.
I'm with you. You've been on the planning commission. I have not.
Quite well taken. You know, I will, whatever the council wants to do. I mean, we're obviously going to move it forward to the third reading, but I would like to see the report and the questions and the comments and the different numbers and the traffic study numbers. I mean, they say that it looks good. I still would like to look at them and see the numbers of what their calculations were.
Yeah, I think I agree. I would agree. I mean, I trust Mr. Wright a lot, but that wall's blue. If he tells me it's red, I'm still going to tell him it's blue.
The council won't meet again until after the first of the year, so that will give the applicant plenty of time to put together a package that may elaborate a little bit more from what you've seen.
And I know the residents have made a trip up here on a not-so-pleasant night, and I want them to know that as well. And if we do, if we move this on second reading, then on third reading, we'll obviously have the report, have some questions and some, you know, concerns or whatever, and we'll go from there.
Is that in form of a motion?
Yeah, I don't have a problem in vote for it on second reading, but that does not mean that I'm supporting it on third reading without questions or comments or motions or deferrals or whatever. So I want the people to understand that, so.
A motion and a roll.
I made that we approved it on second reading.
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second. Questions or comments on the motion? All right, this is for approval on second reading. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Traffic, Section 730, regarding operation of vehicles on approach of authorized emergency vehicles. Is there a motion on second reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the planning commission to schedule a public hearing to consider a zoning request for approximately 2.41 acres located along North Thompson Lane from LIBPD GDO 2 to PCD BPD and GDO-2 District. And you have a copy attached. Mr. Adelot.
Yes, sir. You've basically read my letter, so the planning commission does recommend approval of this zoning. We did conduct a public hearing. It's not a very controversial item. I think we can handle it in a relatively short period at the council level.
Ms. McKenna.
January 29.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll hear from the city manager with regards to alternative pension plan for new employees. Mr. Haley.
Mayor Bragg, and members of the council, earlier this evening, you had a work session in which we presented to you the recommendation of the pension committee and a review of the proposed new pension program. And we would ask you if you have any further questions or directions for staff or the pension committee, or if you are at a point where you want to have further discussion now or just how you might wish to proceed.
Any questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I know that, excuse me, I've got, I have several questions and several concerns. I think Mr. Farland brought up a question in our earlier meeting about maybe running the numbers or what it would look like if we continue for new future employees, a defined benefit plan with a 3% and 5% contribution. And I don't know if we have anything that, I know we talked, I think the commission looked, the subcommittee looked at that, but I don't know if there was any numbers ran on that or not. I don't know how hard it would be to get those numbers, but that's one concern I have. I'd like to see what that option would be, I guess.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, what was the recommendation from the pension committee on this?
The recommendation from the pension committee was to establish a date certain in the future to implement a defined contribution plan for future hired employees of the city.
In my understanding, that this has been worked on off and on for almost two years?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I think part of our charge as council is to look out for the long-term assets and financial conditions of the city. And I think, as we learned in our study session and reading on this, that this is a positive trend that's happening in government and private industry. I think part of our charge is also to protect the present and future and past city employees. So I think we need to look at that and this. The plan that's proposed will have no effect on any present employees. And a unique opportunity that I see is to give the future employees an opportunity to increase the amount of their giving so they can increase the amount that they will have at retirement. And I think that's an opportunity that they do not have now. And I think that's something that we need to look at. Now, as far as Mr. Bratcher's comment about, he wants to see some more numbers on that that could be delivered. I don't have a problem with doing that at all, but, you know, I think this is a sound business plan. I know there's people worried about what they're going to have and the merits of both sides of the plan, but I think the long-term financial interest of the city is best served by doing this. And I think we've got some situations in other municipalities where it's proving that this would be a wise move. And I'll be glad to listen to comments from any other council members, if they choose.
If I could ask a question, Mr. Bratcher and Mr. McFarland. To study another approach, the contribution, the required, a required contribution for a defined benefit plan, you said 3% for general employees, I believe, and 5% for what we classify as uniformed employees?
Correct. Yeah, like we had it, I think we had that same scenario back in, we mentioned it back in 88.
We did, but at the same time, there was also a required contribution of the city at that time. So we've got to know what total program that you would want us to look at would be. And I realize maybe at this point, you can't determine that, but as we discussed in the work session tonight, if you're looking for the opportunity to establish a program at a time certain that would establish a particular dollar figure, an endowed figure, in the future, then we've got to know what that figure would be or we've got to know what, and maybe you don't want any contribution from the city. I'm not sure. You've got to tell us what the parameters are of what you want studied so we can provide that for you.
Well, I think that the subcommittee studied that scenario or a scenario similar to that, or they looked at a scenario similar to that. If we adopted that particular program that that subcommittee had looked at, what would the numbers look like if we run those numbers out?
Okay, so you want us just to bring you back to the numbers that we established earlier?
If you had them into the detail that was presented tonight, you know, the scenarios if someone was hired and this was what it would look like, or just what that program would be and what that cost would be and what savings, if there would be a savings to the city.
Again, we can pull that earlier set of documents and look at it. And I believe there were some 38 different scenarios that we reviewed, but because of the cost associated with a number of them, they were pretty well discounted. And I think that was one of them, but I just had to review it to make sure.
But, Mr. Bratcher, you mean DB1, the last defined benefit choice that was looked at, right?
I don't remember the. and then they'll move on to another city that may not have the same benefit package that we have if we change that. And I don't want to get in a position where employees feel like that when they get to their retirement age, they may not have enough money to retire, and they're staying on longer. And that's not encouraging those to retire at an earlier age, where we can promote other employees to take their spots, which in turn saves us money as well. It's not just the money, there's a lot of little things that I have some concerns with and issues with, but, you know, and you talk about today's plan, where the spouse also has an option to choose. Well, in the defined contribution plan, if they haven't made the money or in a downturn, you know, they may end up outliving their money. That happens a lot. I know that could happen today, but it's having them debate.
Is there some date in the future that council is considering making this change, if in fact, we do want to make a change?
Mayor, I'm willing to go ahead and move tonight that we accept the pension board's recommendation. Maybe we can go ahead and begin that process while we collect these last bits of information, and then at third written final reading, have enough data to go ahead and decide what to do or not to do.
Do we do three readings on this?
No, no. And let me make sure everyone understands, there's a long process. There's a lot of things that have to happen.
Mr. Young made some comments earlier about how we're going, if we go to a defined contribution plan, we don't have all the information on how we're going to handle that plan, do we?
Well, our staff will, we'll have a chance to look at it.
Not right now, because we don't know what.
That's why I say, is there a date that the council would like to look to in the future as being a possible implementation date, so we could?
Does it need to be done at the beginning of the year, or the half year, at fiscal year?
It needs to be, it needs to coincide with your fiscal budget year.
Can we get ready in six months, Mr. Stone?
It would take every bit of it. It would, because you've got internal revenue review and approval process to go through.
I'm not sure we're going to hire that many employees between now and six months.
I'm pretty sure, based on some other things, we're not.
Ms. McGinnon, did you have a comment?
I did, Mayor, thank you. If we have a decision from the council to make this change, it will have to be formally adopted through an ordinance procedure, but we weren't at the point of bringing an ordinance to you because there hadn't been decisions. Similarly, in terms of how the management is going to be done, there will be details, but the fundamental commitment of the council is whether or not they wanted to change to a defined contribution system is really the first thing, after which all these other things can be sorted out. You know, we have, the city spent some on the actuarial work that's been done, and didn't want to spend more if it didn't seem that there was a council interest in making a change. Some of the contractual and other arrangements would have to be done, but having it start, you know, we have talked about if the council made a decision tonight, or at the last meeting, or at the next meeting, we thought with a lot of effort for staff, we could have it in place for the July 1st date. But we're somewhat concerned that if the decision-making got really beyond that, all of the other things that would need to be done, we wouldn't have it ready for the beginning of the next fiscal year. And you may recall that we had hoped to be able to get the plan in place, that it could be part of the review the IRS is doing, or will have to do with our current plan before the end of January. And so, that goal time is already passed. We will be coming to you before January 31st with the restatement of the plan, of our current plan, to comply with IRS regs. That work is being done as we speak. But when we get to the point for a formal adoption of a plan, it will be in an ordinance through reading methodology.
What are your wishes?
So, in essence, Ms. McGinnon, there is a three-reading process before the final implementation, but to get back to the original question we had.
Yes, and, but it wasn't feasible to prepare an ordinance for first reading tonight, but the staff needs the yes, we do want to do it, or no, we don't, to know what direction to take next.
Would it be safe if it's something that we're, I mean, could staff not go ahead and begin the process of preparing the ordinance? Or I guess you need something from us saying, "Go prepare the ordinance."
Well, if there's no likelihood that there will be a majority to make this change, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to do more work. If you know you don't like the idea, let's stop and put it out of its misery.
Sure. Well, I think, I think that we can look at, we could look at several different issues, and I don't disagree with Councilman Young. I think that we are stewards of the taxpayer dollars, and if our purpose is to save money, there's lots of things that we can look at that budget to save the taxpayers' money. On the benefit program, you know, we have an extremely rich benefit program citywide, and I'm not just talking about retirement. I mean, we're rich in health care, we're rich in retiree health care. So, you know, if our purpose is to look at saving money, there's several different things we can look at, and that's my, my whole, whole thing. If we're looking at saving money, and I don't think that that's, I think that that is an issue, to make sure that our pension program is viable in the future, and that we don't put such a liability on our taxpayers that we end up with the scenarios that we've talked about. But I think what we have to be able to explain to our employees that we're not, we're not taking away a benefit, we're adding a benefit. And that was my question, show me what the benefit now is for someone retiring, and it's very likely that our consultant talked about, that it's very likely that the benefit on a defined contribution will be more. It could be less, too. But I think that's, that's something I want to know, are we talking about that we're taking X away? What exactly is the end benefit that we're, I know what we're going to save the city, but I just, I would like to know what we're going to be doing to the employee as well, compared to what we're doing right now, before I would be willing to make a decision.
Well, in the circles that I've been around, and I'm not ready to move, not set a date tonight, but everything that I heard tonight, I've heard elsewhere. And the first place most HR and people go, and to make it easier, you keep the existing employees' benefit package in place. Don't mess with that. You open up a whole can of worms, I mean, they came here employed, you try to maintain those benefits because that's the promise you made to those employees. However, you can give the newer employees a different package, and they know what that package is, it is what it is, you accept it or you don't accept it. The fact that they may move on is collateral damage later on down the road, but most of the times, that does not happen. So, I'm comfortable with the change, but I do need a little more data to get me where I need to be, because I speak from, it's from what I've been around. And in the business world, that benefit package is very, is very sensitive, so if you're going to change the benefit package, you don't change on existing employees unless you make it better, because it's going to continue to cost you more and more money with rising health care costs, your health premiums, the whole nine yards that you cannot control. So, with that said, employees, and I won't get beat up for this, they cannot have it all. You know, you want competitive pay on the front end, really above competitive pay on the front end, but you want, you know, more than competitive benefits in the package when you retire. That's, that's, that's good, but that's not practical. So, this is a business decision, and it only impacts your newer employees, and that gives me that comfort level. It is what it is.
I believe we have a motion, Mayor.
Did we make a motion? I didn't hear the motion.
I attempted to make it.
Well, why don't?
Now, in my, in my naivety, I may have missed the mark.
Make another one.
All right. I move, we say, I move, we move forward with the pension committee's recommendations. And so, tonight, that would be to instruct the staff to begin putting an ordinance together.
And the date?
There are dates.
If it could be accomplished by?
I'll leave that to staff. Well, to be, to coincide with fiscal year 2009.
Nine, 10.
And I know you don't have a second, but that does not prohibit us from gathering additional information, answering your questions, trying to provide you with that which you need to, before we make your final decision, this, this one step in the process.
And I would ask that you do bring that information that Mr. McFarland, Mr. Bratcher have asked for, in that, because I think that's important, that we know, and we can explain to that to future employees, what that's going to be.
We have to keep working and communicating to hit a window that's six months out. And by doing that, I think the opportunity to find a win-win for the citizens and the taxpayer, citizens, taxpayers, and the employees alike exists, but we've got to keep moving forward to hit that window.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Saying none, please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
No.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gillis.
No.
Mr. McFarland.
No.
Mr. Washington.
No.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. It fails. All right, this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution amending the 2007, 2008 budget, and I believe you have a handout in front of you. Mr. Haley.
I'm going to ask Ms. Wright to present this. Mayor, this has to do with your external audit that's currently being conducted.
All right, Ms. Wright.
Mayor and council, this is more or less a housekeeping matter that we do every year after we have all of our final numbers starting to pull together for the audit report, and we're required by law to make sure our budgeted expenditures do not exceed our actual expenditures. So, when we get all of our final payables in that we have to accrue, that we didn't have at year-end, we wait until we, we've got them all. And so, this is the list that we need to amend our budget by, so that we will be able to submit this to the state and it be accepted.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. It fails. All right, this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution amending the 2007, 2008 budget, and I believe you have a handout in front of you. Mr. Haley.
I'm going to ask Ms. Wright to present this. Mayor, this has to do with your external audit that's currently being conducted.
All right, Ms. Wright.
Mayor and council, this is more or less a housekeeping matter that we do every year after we have all of our final numbers starting to pull together for the audit report, and we're required by law to make sure our budgeted expenditures do not exceed our actual expenditures. So, when we get all of our final payables in that we have to accrue, that we didn't have at year-end, we wait until we, we've got them all. And so, this is the list that we need to amend our budget by, so that we will be able to submit this to the state and it be accepted.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider any beer permit applications.
We have two tonight, Mayor. They both have met all of our requirements. One of them, I did not have the final paperwork to give to you. The last inspection was done this afternoon, and the building and code staff was not able to get that down here before our meeting. They are both markets, one at 2414 East Main Street, one at 408 West Northfield Boulevard. The one on Northfield is an ownership change, and the one on East Main is a new location.
All right, they meet the requirements.
Move to be approved.
Second. Motion and second. Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we will, you have before you a list of the statements to be considered for payment. If there's any questions, that'd be a good time, or if there are no questions, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, to pay the bills. Call the roll. Let's see what the council wants to do.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider any other business from the staff or from council to come before the council. Mr. Haley.
Mayor Bragg and members of the council, I would like to make those of you aware that I don't already know, but Mr. Charlie Lynch, who has served as chairman of the Murfreesboro Power Electric Board for a number of years, and has served on that board for 32 years, has submitted his desire to retire and enjoy life a little bit more. And there's no way the city of Murfreesboro will ever be able to, as I've shared with him, thank him and repay him for all of the years of dedicated service and leadership he has paid that wonderful organization. So, having said that, we want to wish Mr. Lynch the best in the future. I do have a recommend, request and recommendation to you to appoint Mr. Chuck Phillips to fill this vacancy on the Murfreesboro Power Board. So, I would ask you to consider that recommendation.
All right, you have that recommendation. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move, and I would like to make a comment if I could, that I've served on, I served on the power board with Mr. Lynch, and I want to just echo what Mr. Haley said about Mr. Charlie Lynch. He is, he is one individual that's done a great job for 32 years on that board, and his integrity and his sincere leadership ability and what he has done for the employees of the Murfreesboro Electric Department and services he's provided to the city would not be easily replaced. And I know the council wants to send him the best wishes, so he's under grabs, we'll say that, and I make a motion to approve the recommendations.
All right, there's a motion.
Second.
There's a second. I want to join in congratulating Mr. Lynch for the work that he has done on a voluntary status for our power board, and certainly keeping Vice Mayor in check for these, these many years. It's been a hard job, but.
I've bore out three mayors, almost three.
Oops.
And he, he's done a good job. He really, the way he runs those meetings are really, really, he does a great job.
He's a fine gentleman, and we certainly wish him well, but really do appreciate his efforts over the years with the power board, along with Ms. Gales, Vice Mayor, and Mr. Burton and others, Dean Burton, who served there, Jean Anne Rogers, have done an excellent job and will continue to do so, I'm sure. So, you have a motion and a second. It's called the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Mr. Kirchner, I believe you had something?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items for other business. The first is Stones River Water Treatment Plant Expansion, a carbonic acid feed system to be installed as part of our construction. This is a change of $56,700 to install the necessary equipment, piping, electrical, and ancillary systems for our trial for the carbon dioxide feed, which we will use to adjust the pH of the settled water. Once we do this trial, then we'll move into a design and
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Mr. Kirchner, I believe you had something?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items for other business. The first is Stone's River Water Treatment Plant Expansion, a carbonic acid feed system to be installed as part of our construction. This is a change of $56,700 to install the necessary equipment, piping, electrical, and ancillary systems for our trial for the carbon dioxide feed, which we will use to adjust the pH of the settled water. Once we do this trial, then we'll move into a design and a final conclusion of the installation of that, which would cost somewhere about $380,000 once we get this completed.
All right, are there questions on this recommendation?
Move we approve.
Second.
All right, a motion to approve this recommendation and a second. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
The next is we receive bids for treatment chemicals that will be used with our new membrane system. Basically, these will be used to clean the system, and then there's some other, the fluorosilic acid and sodium hydroxide for adjustments. We would ask that you approve the low responsible, low responsible and responsive bid for each of those items which are listed in the table in the letter. That represents probably about $100,000 in annual use.
Move for approval.
Second. All right, motion and second. Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Any other business? Ms. McGannon?
Mayor, the city has condemned the Crystal Restaurant on South Church Street and had paid into court $850,000 based on the appraisal that the city had done. That matter has been set for trial. The city has received an offer to settle the case for an additional $175,000 payment in excess of the amount of $850,000 already deposited. That offer to settle does not come to you with a recommendation from your staff, but is presented to you for action.
Any questions for Ms. McGannon, or?
Mayor, just some comments I would like to make. Based upon the information that the city legal staff has provided to us, I agree with Ms. McGannon that when you look at the two appraisals, I don't think that the offer of settlement or the demand of settlement that's been made is appropriate. I would like to suggest that in the spirit of compromise, that we give the legal department an additional $75,000 as a ticket to leave its offer to settle the matter, but with the understanding that must be accepted prior to our current trial date, and there will be no request for continuance of trial to keep negotiations alive, that that $75,000 is the final offer. And I put that in the form of a motion.
I guess I'd like to make a comment before we go on. I'd like, I agree in principle with what Mr. Gilli is saying, but I was thinking more about $50,000. I personally think that that's more than adequate gesture, but that's just my opinion.
I'll second Mr. Gilli's motion.
All right, you have a motion and a second at $75,000.
And actually, that's up to $75,000, so.
All right. All in favor, let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Anything else? We have with us tonight Melinda and Miles Tate, and they're here from the Murfreesboro Half Marathon, and I believe they have received a State of Tennessee Award and Volunteer of the Year Award for their event and for the work that they have done on the half marathon, and we certainly are proud that they're here and appreciate their presence, not only tonight, but in our community, and the way you've worked to make this a rousing event, and I think, how many runners do we have this year? Seventeen hundred?
Seventy-nine hundred.
We had a lot of people who registered and a lot who ran, and most who finished, so that's really, really good, so. Mr. Gilli?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank the Tates for all the hard work that they put into this. I've ran in both of the half marathons we've had, and it's been, I know Mr. Lyons has, and Mr. McFarland, you ran in the first one, planning on the second, but sidelined by an injury, and I think we all have tested it's been a.
Yeah, they won.
They participated, those who participated in race one.
Yeah. They haven't finished yet, but they.
They're still going. They keep going back and trying to get through.
They do a little bit.
It's like algebra.
But it's, back to my original point, both races have been extreme successes for this community, and there's been an exorbitant amount of work that's had to go into that from volunteer staff headed up by the Tates, and I want them to know how much we appreciate that, and also to congratulate them because they're about to become grandparents in the.
Such a young age, too.
What, in the next three weeks, four weeks or so? So touring between baby New Year and the tax write-off, right?
Try to move that up into December, it'll be better for your taxes.
We would be remiss, also, I think Melinda would say this, that if we did not thank Mr. Rainier and the Parks and Rec staff, Mr. Goodwin, for all of the work that they put in to make this event a success, it is a true collaboration with the city and with the marathon group to be able to put this on, so, and we are looking forward to another good event next year, and hopefully we'll be able to get the mayor to run it next year.
Right.
And Mr. McFarland, I think you're exactly right.
Or the mayor's representative.
We do need, do need to give our thanks to Lanny and staff as well, because I remember when the Tates first contacted all of us about the proposal of starting a half marathon, we called Lanny, and he said, tell them to come, let's do it. I mean, he was just excited and ready to go, so. And the award, Mayor, that was given was out of large cities of over 100,000 population, so that's over Chattanooga, Knoxville, Memphis.
Nashville.
Nashville, that this was the number-one event in the State of Tennessee, so it was a huge award for Murfreesboro.
Very nice. Congratulations again. And Vice Mayor reminds me that the Polar Bear Plunge is January 3 at 8:30 a.m. at Sportscom. Unfortunately, I will not be able to make that, but I'm sure that there will be a number of people who are excited about that opportunity. Mr. Young always brings a judge with him to show competence before he jumps in, so.
And my attorney, Mr. Gilli.
Mayor, I think they're going to change the date to accommodate your schedule.
Oh, really? Yes. No, I'm going to be out of town.
Regardless of the date you have.
My daughter lives five miles from the city limits, and I will be out of town.
My theory is not to participate in anything, there's paramedics on the standby.
Exactly right. That's pretty scary. All right, the Polar Bear Plunge. Is there anything else to come before the council? Appreciate all of you being here. Thank you very much, and you are adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
That's right.